Calling to order the Monday, September 19th, 2016 regular meeting of the Thirty-Sixth Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tim Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Groblin.
Here.
Councilmember Kedekel.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
Councilmember Turbrack.
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer.
Here. The first order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the following changes. First, I'd like to add motion M. seventy-three, sixteen, and make that number eleven on tonight's agenda. I'd like to move up communications to the next order after Agenda Item Number Eleven, followed by the closed session at number twelve.
Very good. With those changes, is there a second order?
Second.
A motion is being proposed by Councilmember Turbrack, with support by Councilmember Baker. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on the agenda?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Groblin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And I see Pastor Adam Groves with us this evening. Would you please stand for the invocation?
Thanks, let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this wonderful evening. You've given us a chance to be in Berkeley, a wonderful city that it is, and so we thank you for the blessing it is to be part of such a great city. And, Lord, as we go back to now, all the kids are back in school, we just pray for just the school years here. We have a number of kids in the room, pray for the teachers, pray for all that goes on and goes into the great public schools that we have in Berkeley as well. And, Lord, also, the number of incidents in the last just forty-eight hours, attempts of terrorism, and so we once again lift up our police officers, public safety. Would you protect them on their routes? Would you protect them as they just do their work protecting us? And so we just thank you for the work that they do. Lord, give wisdom to these leaders here at this table, give them discernment, guide them in what is best for this city. So we just ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we come to the Citizens' Comments portion of tonight's meeting, where you may present your thoughts on issues not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's desk. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Paul Jordan, I live on Tyler in Berkeley. And most of the time, I'm watching these meetings from the relative comfort of my recliner sitting at home. Does have certain advantages to it. But there are a few disadvantages, and that's one of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention tonight. The sound system in this room is horrible at home. It's next to impossible to understand what most people are saying when they're up here talking. So I know there's a feasibility study being done for this building, and I'd like to ask that we see if it's feasible to do something about that particular issue. In the meantime, I'd like to remind everybody to please speak directly into the microphones and use a conversational tone so we can all hear you. My second point of discussion regards something a little bit more serious that's been going on through the city. I think it's the biggest issue that we face right now, and that is the amazing amount of building that we're having done. The new houses going in and such. I don't think it's a stretch to say that this has been a divisive issue for us. It separated people into kind of an us versus them, and I don't think that's good for us. The citizens are angry and distrustful of the city officials, and in turn, some of the city officials have become rather defensive and autocratic in dealing with some of the complaints of the citizens. Guys, I've lived in Berkeley all my life. I love this city. This is not the environment we want. It's not healthy for us. It's not healthy for a city that has received a ton of positive press lately. It's not healthy for a city that is trying to encourage people from outside the city to come be Berkeley. It's not encouraged, yeah, it's not an environment which encourages new residents that have already moved here to feel that we care. I feel it's gotten to the point that a cooling off period is needed. This would give the citizens and city officials time to sit down and discuss how to move forward without continuing the absolute rancor that is existing right now. With that in mind, I'm asking the City Council and/or the City Building and Planning Department to order a moratorium on any new building permits being issued for the City of Berkeley. Now, I have suggested to a couple of you in one-on-one conversations that this be done, and one of the responses I got was, "You can't stop doing business." Well, the City of Berkeley's a municipality, it's not a business. Municipality's first duty is to protect its citizens. One need look no further than the City of Flint to see what happens when you run a city as a business, and I don't think we want to have that happen here. I thank you very much for your attention, folks. Everybody, have a good night.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, seeing?
I'd like to just make a comment regarding the Master Plan Amendment open house that took place in August. I believe about one hundred people attended to give their feedback for the new Master Plan Amendment that we've been talking about the past few months. The Plan Commission also provided a survey for residents to give their feedback. But many people felt that the open house survey presented new family, new multifamily development in the single-family district as the only option. Many residents were also looking for a way to give their feedback online. So myself and several other residents made an online survey shortly after the open house. We have over five hundred residents responded. I sent these, the first five hundred surveys and names of all who took the survey to City Council and the City Planner early last week. We printed a summary of the results for this meeting at the front here. Our survey was relatively short. There were three main focus questions. We asked, "Which of the following do you see yourself doing in the next ten years?" The options were stay in current home, purchase a single-family home, or move to a multifamily home. We also had a preference question with several different hypothetical rezoning areas. And finally, we asked residents, "What was their vision for residential land use in the next ten years?" We gave options ranging from allowing multifamily dwellings in the single-family district, which was the 2015 amendment recommends, to no changes at all to the single-family districts. Overall message shouldn't surprise anyone considering the interactions residents have had with the Council and the Plan Commission since June, and that's, we want to keep the single-family districts as single-family. As I mentioned, over five hundred residents provide feedback, and for some perspective, the entire 2007 Master Plan was adopted with feedback from less than two hundred residents. So I hope the Council will help encourage the Plan Commission to have a draft amendment prepared to present to the public in October so we can move forward as a community. So, we plan on presenting our survey results more in depth at the Plan Commission next week, September twenty-seventh, I hope more people can come there. Residents can also Google search "Berkeley residents against rezoning" or search on Facebook for those results as well. They can also email berkeleyrar@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rachel Pisantini, and Patty's gonna help me pass out some stuff. Where are you? Oh. I live on Oxford in Berkeley. Anyway, I want to talk about the blocked sidewalks, which I think this is nothing new to you guys. We have wrote letters, other residents have wrote letters, and this pertains to this gentleman over here who spoke about the new builds. You know, we're not against the new builds, but we do want the respect of the regular residents that live in the community, and there's way too many sidewalks that are blocked. We are a walking school district. Children walk to school. Picture your six, seven, and eight-year-old child walking to school and having to cross into the street to get past a build site. The pictures that I gave you, if you look at number five in the bottom right-hand corner, no disabled person should have to come upon this and not be able to get through. And that could be a regular person in a wheelchair, it could be a mom pushing a stroller, it really doesn't matter. We need to improve this. So, interestingly enough, I wrote to Mr. Baumgarten about this. Patty, you're not done. I wrote to Mr. Baumgarten about this, and he responded and sent me this letter that Patty's passing out to you. And I want to say that I think this is a good first step. This is a letter that evidently the city plans to send to the builders. What concerns me about this, and I asked Mr. Baumgarten about the highlighted area at the top of the page, I received no response. But it says, "You're telling the builders in this letter, 'You must install the fencing to the curb along the curb line.' Signs should be installed on either side stating the sidewalk is closed." Then if you flip over the page to the other highlighted area, it says, "We must have our ordinances followed. Failure to do so will result in misdemeanor ticket and/or the city correcting the violation at your expense." So what strikes me very odd, and it's very confusing, Patty? What strikes me very odd, and what Patty's passing out to you, is the zoning ordinance for pedestrian passage. And that reads, "At least five feet of sidewalk space shall be kept clear and clean for the free passage of pedestrians. If the building operations are such, and such free passageway is impractical, a temporary plank sidewalk with substantial railings or sidewalk shelter shall be provided around such obstruction." So, in the letter that the city plans to send to the builders, we're basically telling the builders to break our laws. I'm really confused on that. So what I want to know is what open meeting did this zoning ordinance get changed, where we now have it in our zoning ordinances telling the builders that it's okay to block off to the curb? And so far, nobody's been able to answer my question. So I think it's really important to note that we have to follow our zoning ordinances, because if we don't, then why do we have them? My perfect example, if the speed limit's forty and I drive fifty, I can't tell the officer, "I think it's better if I drive fifty." We can't tell the builders, "We think it's better to violate our codes." Right? We have to follow the codes. Patty, I think you have something. So Patty has a follow-up to this to kind of add to what I'm saying.
Here's something. Oh, good, I have a job now. Hi, I'm Patty Curtis, and I bought my Berkeley home thirty-two years ago. I was just like six years old. I am here to show you, the members of the council, and my neighbors, that builders do not need to be taking up space beyond the lots on which they are building, and the code enforcement officers and the city planner do not have to allow it to take place on any build within our city. And I know this because I am a code enforcement officer in Birmingham. I've brought with me just a few pictures of build sites in Birmingham. As you will see, the houses in that city are all built within the required six-foot stable construction fence which surrounds the entire build, and nothing whatsoever is allowed to block the sidewalks, excuse me, or be placed in the city right away above the curb, between the sidewalk and the curb. All dumpsters, portable restrooms, construction materials, equipment, including construction vehicles, must be stored within the sites, and the sidewalks must be passable while construction is going on. Hence the reason for the solid fencing as opposed to the orange plastic wavy fencing. The only exceptions are when they're actually in transit or actively replacing the sidewalks, such as moving materials across the sidewalk. And then they generally have employees there to make sure nobody comes by anyway. This is required even on the smallest lots, which are the same size or smaller than many of the newly developed lots in Berkeley, forty by one-ten or one-twenty. Builders are rarely given parking or street obstruction permits for things like dumpsters. There's been a dumpster on Cumberland for over six months. And then it's only during an active concrete pour in front, it's only for a few hours, or it's in extraordinary circumstances due to the configuration of the street or the project, which we don't have here in Berkeley on our residential streets. Regarding sidewalk damage, builders who damage the sidewalks must, at the end of each workday and throughout the workday, see that the walk is brought up to a safe and reasonably level and walkable condition. Usually, this is done with cold patch or twenty-one double-A gravel. It is the builder's responsibility to make sure that this is maintained on a daily basis until the concrete sidewalks are replaced. They have to be walkable throughout the build. There might be an example of cold patch on one of those photos. Gates must be closed or open to allow pedestrian passage. At the end of the day and during the day, whether, even if the site is unattended for only a few minutes, they have to be closed. Regarding violations of codes or ordinance, as a code enforcement officer, when I see a violation at a site, I immediately contact the builder. By phone, from the car, in front of the site, and I inform him of the violation and what I expect to see done and when I expect to see it done, giving him anywhere from thirty minutes to twenty-four to forty-eight hours, depending on the violation and how severely it impacts the residents around. This is done on every violation, even what some consider minor, like leaving your gates open. Sometimes I'll get out and do a builder a favor and close the gates, but I always call him and tell him, "I closed the gates today. Next time, I'm calling you out here." I work with the builders, and I often discuss these problems at length with them, but if there is not a very timely or appropriate response, or even an attempt to respond appropriately, that builder gets a stop-work order immediately or a misdemeanor ticket. No new inspections are done until any code violations are corrected. That is the way you do business. That is how you attract responsible builders, and that is how you serve the citizens here, the neighbors. You don't do inspections, you don't provide him anything until he corrects his violations. In my experience, this is the surest and most effective way to make builders understand that we follow the law. No proper or ethical builder will be chased away by code enforcement. No builder has stopped building in Birmingham under these severe restrictions, and they work. They really do work. Strict enforcement, however, has made builders stop violating the codes. Usually, one stop-work order or ticket does the job. And just on a personal note, I have worked for three local governments. I worked for Southfield, I retired from Royal Oak, and now I work for Birmingham. All of it spent in positions that require direct, constant, intense contact with residents and citizens visiting. Twenty-eight years. I'm familiar with how the relationship between civil servants, elected officials, government officials, and the residents should be. In all of my years working for those cities, I've always been trained, and I trained my trainees. Number one is the residents. You serve the resident. If you have a way, if you can find a way to serve the resident, that's what you do. Builders are gonna come and go. The people that pay our taxes are the people that are going to live in those houses, not the builders. The people that pay for all these costs for code enforcement are the residents, not the builders. They pay fees, we pay to live here. If at any time in my career I had treated any citizen with the unresponsiveness, the dismissiveness, or the downright disrespectful attitude, I would have been immediately disciplined or fired. That's a fact, even as a union employee. I just am having a hard time, having worked responsibly for all these governments for twenty-eight years, having a hard time understanding why some officials want to fight the citizens who simply want the laws followed, and they want them enforced when they're not followed. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
My name is Margaret Grassa. I am a Berkeley resident, I live twenty-eight, seventy-nine Buckingham. I am the chairman of the Tree Board. I spoke to you last month about our tree planting coming up, and I said we hope to make over a hundred trees or get more than a hundred trees planted. We got a hundred and eleven, and then there's gonna be some more that are gonna be put into parks and boulevards. That number isn't quite finished yet. If you're interested, because you see the trees that you see that went in last summer or this fall that will be going in, if any of the citizens are interested, they can call DPW and get on the list now and start saving their money, and then have the tree planted next fall. The new trees will be going in probably late November, maybe early December, it kind of depends on when the frost hits. The ones that you see out now that have the stakes in, the two nice wooden stakes from last year, those have been in for about a year. They do still need a little TLC with extra watering and stuff. And people, the hundred or so people who bought a new tree, when it goes in, water it really good and take care of them, and we appreciate it. And I just want everybody to know, the trees in our city are very important. We are looking for new board members, if there's anybody who's interested in tree issues in the city and helping to educate citizens and advise the council. We're looking at possibly, we're looking at our ordinances and stuff about trees, but we just have so many silver maples that are coming down. Almost everybody I talked to in the city is aware of our silver maples coming down. So, once we lose those, we are losing a lot of our tree canopy. So I encourage everybody to consider planting a tree. If you don't have a spot for a tree, make a donation and we'll find a spot. We also have residents who can't afford a tree, but they'd be glad to take care of it in their front yard if someone would help them pay for it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you. Very good. Seeing Paul.
Actually, these ladies kind of brought a question to my mind. What's the city's liability if somebody gets hurt at one of these sites where we're not following the ordinance? I mean, apparently we're not. You know, okay, they've got the sign up, it says sidewalk closed, but the city is instructing the builders to blockade public access where maybe they don't need to. Is it ADA compliant? If somebody gets hit by a car, you know, one of the little eight-year-olds walking to school because we've got a pickup truck from the construction company parked in front of the site, which is already blocked off anyhow, that kid gets nailed, is the city liable for it?
Thanks, Paul.
Hi, my name is Lisa Kempner, I live on Columbia. And just a quick comment. So, we have tried, we've tried, tried, tried. We've come and talked to you before about the builders and the problems with the building department. We've talked to the city manager. We went to ZBA last week. We have tried and tried and tried. The problem is, is that with every issue, it's kind of like, "Not my problem, I don't have the authority." Nobody seems to want to do anything about anything, and it's really, really making people angry. And unfortunately, the buck stops with you guys, because you're the only ones that we can control whether you sit there or not. We can't control the city manager, or ZBA, or PC. So eventually, that anger's gonna be turned on to you guys if things don't start, if people feel like they're not even being listened to.
Hi, my name is Glenn Peery, two-six-four-seven Tyler. My wife and I are here tonight with what I hope is a less contentious issue. We are big fans of birds, much like you've got dog and cat lovers. We love birds. It's one of the things that brought us together early in our relationship and continues into our marriage to this day, and we're excited that we see many communities around Berkeley, such as Auburn Hills, Centerline, Colson, Dearborn, Lathrop Village, Medicine Heights, Pontiac, Rochester Hills, Royal Oak, Troy, have adjusted or added to their animal ordinances over the last four or five years to allow the keeping of backyard chickens. And this is nice, because we have a large body of data that we can go by to look and see if there are problems, or what the solutions were, and how these communities are faring with this. And I think that, you know, there's no new ground that need be tread. My wife and I are gonna be ready, willing, and able to work with you guys, do all the research, do all the hard work, make all the phone calls, and to see if this is something that we can fit into Berkeley. I know we have a lot of dog and cat lovers here. We have, like I said, we have, we love birds, we've got some indoor birds that we love to death, and we would certainly love to have chickens on our property. One of the nice things that we found out with all of the people that we know is, this is one of those things that, for those relatively small number of people that are interested in the subject, it's very beneficial. For everybody else, there is no harm. So, at least so far in our research, with Ferndale being one of the big poster childs for this, is it hasn't presented any issues, and if somebody's not interested, you just don't get chickens, no problems. So, I just wanted to make myself known, and my wife Deb is sitting over there, and didn't want to talk tonight, but I have sent all of you an email, I believe, in the last couple of weeks, also spoke with Chief Eshman, and look forward to working with you. I'll be in touch when I do have a more comprehensive packet put together. I don't want to give you anything that's only half-done, so. Thank you very much for your time, and certainly we'll also be making it available to all of our neighbors, and if anybody is interested out there in Berkeley, get ahold of me, even if you just have questions and are curious. I am more than happy to answer the questions. We've got a lot of friends in this, and just the wealth of knowledge is amazing, and the birds are really a lot of fun. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Very good. Seeing no one else come to the microphone, then we move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the regular Thirty-Sixth City Council meeting on Monday, August fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Warrant, matter of approving warrant number thirteen oh six. Ordinance number oh zero six sixteen, matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter one twenty-six, Article two, Section one twenty-six dash twenty-two, cross connections of the Berkeley City Code to modify inspection and testing requirements concerning water supply cross connections, and to prescribe a penalty for violations. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for ten days at the Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center. Resolution number R. thirty-one sixteen, matter of recognizing the retirements of Mary Catherine Mueller, Annette Micah, Sulee Tyler, Maureen Davy, Suzanne Nylin, Vernita Stonehouse, and Molly Prude Home from the City of Berkeley Public Library. Resolution number R. thirty-two sixteen, matter of recognizing Beaumont Children's and the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library for sponsoring the new baby kits at the Berkeley Public Library. And resolution number R. thirty-three sixteen, matter of accepting donations from area businesses and organizations in support of the summer reading program to the Berkeley Public Library.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, with Councilmember Stedman, with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Groblin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we move on to the regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read Item Number One on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I've asked Councilmember Stedman to read R. thirty-one sixteen.
It's a pleasure. We have seven retirements from the Berkeley Public Library. This is a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to recognize the retirements of Mary Catherine Mueller, Annette Majka, Sulee Tyler, Maureen Davy, Suzanne Nyland, Vernita Stonehouse, and Molly Prudhomme from the City of Berkeley Public Library. Whereas Mary Catherine Mueller began her career at the Berkeley Public Library on March 20, 1991, and served the library for 25 years. And whereas Annette Majka began her career at the Berkeley Public Library on October 14, 1992, and served the library for 23 years. And whereas Sulee Tyler served for three years in the 1980s, and began her career most recently at the Berkeley Public Library on September 15, 1995, and served the library for 20 years. And whereas Maureen Davy began her career at the Berkeley Public Library on April 23, 1998, and served the library for 18 years. And whereas Suzanne Nyland began her career at the Berkeley Public Library on March 6, 2001, and served the library for 15 years. And whereas Vernita Taffey Stonehouse began her career at the Berkeley Public Library on September 1, 2004, and served the library for 11 years. And whereas Molly Prudhomme began her career at the Berkeley Public Library on September 6, 1988, and served for seven years, and then again August 29, 2008, and served the library for another seven years. Now therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves that Mary Catherine Mueller, Annette Majka, Sulee Tyler, Maureen Davy, Suzanne Nyland, Taffey Stonehouse, and Molly Prudhomme, having served library patrons for an accumulative 126 years, are hereby recognized on the occasion of their retirement from the City of Berkeley. And City Council, on behalf of our local residents and employees, expresses its sincere thanks and appreciation for their years of dedicated service to our city, and extends our best wishes as they begin the next chapter of their lives, introduced and passed this 19th day of September 2016 at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council, signed by our mayor, Phil O'Dwyer. And if you would all come up. If anyone has something to say, please come to the microphone.
Matt's coming up.
I'm sure the library director has something to say.
On behalf of all of us, we really enjoyed the years that we worked in Berkeley, and especially at the library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a great pleasure working with these ladies here. On my first couple of years as library director here, the number of years of service here, the dedication to the library and to the community is just monumental. And this is a new era for the library, but we are so grateful for the service that they have provided.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you've done for us.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
Hi. You know?
That's my name.
That's three left.
That's my name, mine.
Family name.
Yeah.
Great. Well, hopefully I can carry on the tradition.
What's that?
Thank you.
And now I've asked Councilmember Gravlin to read Resolution R3216.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Beaumont Children's and the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library for sponsoring new baby kits at the Berkeley Public Library. Whereas the City of Berkeley, Berkeley Public Library has received support from Beaumont Children's and the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library as sponsors of the library's new baby kits. And whereas Beaumont Children's and the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library each contributed $1,000 to fund the new baby kits used to welcome new babies to Berkeley. And whereas, excuse me, and now therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that the Council of the City of Berkeley accept the donated support from Beaumont Children's and the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library. And Section 2, the donated funds have allowed the purchase of supplies for the new baby kits, including sippy cups, from Berkeley's R-Green Topia and Oak Park's Bookbeat Bookstore. And Section 3, the Berkeley Public Library and City Council are grateful to Beaumont Children's and the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library for their role in getting literacy tools into the hands of new babies, and for their generous support of the library and our community. Introduced and passed at a regular City Council meeting on Monday, September 19, 2016, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. And now we move along to the third item in this section. I've asked Councilmember Terbrack to read R3316.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, accepting donations from area businesses and organizations in support of the summer reading program to the Berkeley Public Library. Whereas the City of Berkeley, Berkeley Public Library has received donations from area businesses and organizations for the summer reading program at the library. And whereas the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library and Vibe Credit Union served as primary sponsors by donating funds for programs, prizes, and related expenses. And America's Stamp Stop, Amici's Pizza, Articulate, Century 21 Town and Country, The McCarty Team, Cultured Cook, Doggy in the Window, Edible Arrangements, Fit Body Boot Camp, Hartfield Lanes, Hungry Howie's Pizza, Copycats Family Hair Care, R-Green Topia, Pampered Chef, Diane Bruce, Royal Popcorn Supply, Sila Italian Dining and Pizza, Sweet Lorraine's Cafe and Bar, The Doll Hospital and Toy Soldier Shop, The Lunch Cafe, 24 Seconds Bar and Grill, The Twisted Shamrock, Twice Around Antiques, and Westbourne Market served as prize sponsors by donating gift certificates or items. And now therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that the Council of the City of Berkeley accept these generous donations. In Section 2, the donations provided were utilized to support the summer reading program of the Berkeley Public Library. In Section 3, the Berkeley Public Library and City Council are grateful to the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library and Vibe Credit Union as primary sponsors, as well as the 22 other businesses that helped make the summer reading program possible. Introduced and passed at a regular City Council meeting on Monday, September 19, 2016, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you to all the businesses who make this important program possible. And I know later on, in tonight's council meeting, we will have a report from our librarian. But I'd just like to say at this time how grateful we are for the support that we get from the residents and businesses to make our library such an important center of knowledge and entertainment in our city. And so we move along now, Ms. Boucher, to item number two.
Presentation matter, receiving a presentation by the Regional Transportation Authority of Southeast Michigan, RTA, regarding the RTA Regional Transit Master Plan.
Is that a motion to approve the RTA presentation?
A motion to receive the presentation, Your Honor.
Motion to receive by Councilmember Baker, with support by Councilmember Terbrack. Mr. Baumgau.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we are joined by representative from the Regional Transportation Authority, who is working through several different communities. He's actually a local gentleman himself, from just across Woodward. But they're working through many different communities to try to educate the population in advance of the November ballot measure that is going to be across all three counties, correct?
Four counties.
Four counties. Thank you for the correction there. And ask a very important question of those that show up to the election, show up to the polling place that day. So, we hope that everybody does, and we hope they do so with good information in hand.
Thank you so much. My name is Ben Stupka. I'm the manager of Planning and Financial Analysis with the Regional Transit Authority. Before I start clicking through the slides, just a little bit of background on the Regional Transit Authority. We do cover a four-county region that includes Oakland, Macomb, Wayne, and Washtenaw Counties. We're really charged with kind of two main buckets of responsibilities. One is coordinating the services of the existing transit providers, so that's SMART here in this area, and in Macomb and kind of suburban Wayne County, DDOT in the city of Detroit, AAA in Ann Arbor, and the People Mover in the city of Detroit, and soon the M1 rail or Q line in the city of Detroit. And just very briefly, just recently, in partnership with DDOT and SMART, we opened a service called Reflex, an express limited stop service on Woodward and Grashit, that operates from 5:00 AM to 1:00 in the morning during the weekdays, about the same hours during Saturday and Sunday. It's the first limited stop express service that operates seamlessly throughout the region. And we're really excited. It's just been up and running about two weeks, and it really takes care of some of the major issues that we have with transit in this region. So, we're excited in getting some things out there before even November 8. Second main thing that we're charged with doing is securing a long-term dedicated funding source that will result in a 20-year seamless network of transit services. Part of the plan that we're going to talk about today, and part of the necessity of having a local funding source, is we're able to secure almost $1 billion in additional state and federal funding, especially on the federal side, that's going to other communities. It's going to Utah, it's going to Denver, it's going to Cleveland, it's going everywhere else but here. And we're paying into that as taxpayers at the pump. And you really need the local funding source that we'll be talking about today to be able to secure those funds. So, it's not just about what we're putting in, but what we can leverage with our dollars. As you may know, over the past several decades, it's been about 20 attempts. I don't know if that's an apocryphal number, but that's what we like to say, 20 attempts at regional transit. So, why is this time different? So, we were established legislatively in 2012. There's really three main things we like to talk about with kind of the uniqueness of the RTAs it's currently constituted. One is our governance structure. We have members from, two members from each county, and a member from the city of Detroit. We have a non-voting member appointed by the governor, and that member is our chair. So, we have nine votes, 10-member board, nine votes. The chair cannot vote, so he kind of herds the cats. Planning. We're responsible for developing a draft master plan. So, yay, I'm a planner, I love plans, woo! And we've seen some plans before, but this plan is fiscally constrained. This is the first plan that, and I really even like calling it a master plan, it's an implementation plan. We have 20 years' worth of projects and the funding to track with those projects. So, that's what we're really putting in front of the voters on November 8. Finally, funding. We are the first RTA that's been able to go to the voters and ask for support for transit in this region. And we will be going to the voters with a question on November 8 for a 1.2 mil property tax increase to support regional transit. And just another framing device that we like to talk about, and just kind of defining the problem. Right now, we're spending about $69 per capita to support operations of transit in our region. That's quite a bit below some of our peer regions. So, we look at Atlanta, Cleveland, Denver, some of the bigger regions, Seattle. They're spending anywhere from $120 per capita to all the way up to $470 in Seattle. So, we're resting about $50 below kind of a national average for bigger cities in spending on transit. Now, I don't want to say, let's just spend more, and that's great, right? That's not the answer. But there are some issues that I want people to think about when we're talking about this. So, according to SEMCOG, who we work with very closely, we know about 92% of the region cannot get to work in under an hour on transit. We know that services across the 8-mile border only operate about six hours per day. They don't operate on the weekends. So, right now, the service, the Reflex service, it's the first time that you can take a bus at noon in the middle of the day from the city of Berkeley to downtown Detroit, or vice versa. So, we want to change that all over the city, all over the region. Seniors and people with disabilities sometimes get dropped off at the borders, too. So, people who need to take on-demand services for disabilities, they have to transfer, too, at the border, just because of these jurisdictional issues. There's no premium transit options available, no rapid transit options, really. There's some limited services, but nothing, you know, really kind of monumental, nothing that you could start kind of developing around, creating a new type of identity around. And finally, our travel patterns show that about 67% of Detroiters, people that live in Detroit, work outside of Detroit, and 72% of the people that work in Detroit live outside of Detroit. So, we travel regionally. About 60% of our trips, commute trips, just throughout the entire region, not just Detroit and back, but Macomb to Oakland, Washtenaw to Western Wayne. There are people traveling regionally, and our system is just not set up for that. Our providers provide good local service, but they're just not set up to do regional service. So, with all that said, I will run through the plan, and I promise I will be brief. Can't, where do I point this thing to get it to?
Go forward.
Oh, that would help. Can you do, okay, all right. We'll do a little Vanoway action, fair enough. The existing transit network, so we talked a little bit about this. I just, I want to emphasize how important our partnership is with the existing providers. We're not looking to be another transit operator. We are working with the providers. We are ensuring that our financial model does not take funding, formula funding, away from the providers. We want them to continue to provide their local services, provide those local connections. That's their charge. Our charge is regional. Furthermore, our plan is really designed to partner with the providers on major routes. So, their best interests and our best interests are completely aligned in this plan. That allowed us to spread, kind of really spread the investment across the region, and allow for the continued support of those providers. So, that's a really key kind of foundational piece of the plan. We like to call, we talk about the plan in terms of building blocks. This is the foundation, the existing providers. The next and probably most largest investment we have are the Bus Rapid Transit Lines. So, we've had lots of conversations with the city of Berkeley here about the Woodward Bus Rapid Transit Line. I won't go into detail about that. We certainly can come back and dive in much more detail on that project at another time. We also have a Bus Rapid Transit Line along Grashit, another on Washtenaw Avenue connecting Ann Arbor to Ypsilanti, and a fourth on Michigan Avenue connecting downtown Detroit to the airport. For those who don't know, Bus Rapid Transit, we like to call it light rail on wheels. So, these are bus services that operate in dedicated lanes by and large. They have transit signal priorities, so they can really go up and down the corridor very quickly. They operate at limited stops. The stations that they have are very, very large. They're well-appointed. You can pay your fare at the station. They have real-time information at the station. They have level boarding. So, somebody who has a disability, or a senior, or someone wants to roll a bike onto the bus, doesn't have to wait for the bus to crouch down, you just go right on. Generally, you can load people on both doors. So, you really, really reduce the amount of time people are getting on and off the bus, and you really have the speed of the bus going up and down the corridor is very, very good. The Bus Rapid Transit System, we have currently projected headways of about 10 minutes during peak periods, so the bus coming every 10 minutes, 15 minutes the majority of the rest of the day. So, very, very high frequency, high reliability on these routes, very large investment, very large capital investment, great opportunity for economic development along all these corridors. The Regional Rail Project, this connects downtown Ann Arbor with downtown Detroit, five stations, one in Ann Arbor, one in Ypsilanti, one in downtown Wayne, one in Dearborn, another in New Center in Detroit. Folks who have been around the region for a while may recognize this project. This is the Ann Arbor to Detroit Rail Project that SEMCOG and MDOT have been working on for years. We kind of picked it up, redid a lot of the analysis, are really looking to kind of move this project forward as part of what we call our regional Rapid Transit System. So, this is really kind of the largest investment, representing 45%, 50% of the entire plan, are these major investments. But the next, and probably more important piece, both locally and regionally, are cross-county connectors. So, we have 10 routes throughout the region, most important to the folks of the city of Berkeley, 12-mile being one of our larger routes that we're investing in, in Greenfield. These are routes that are operated by either DDOT or SMART today, but generally speaking, so I'll use Greenfield as an example. There's a Detroit city bus route that ends at 8 Mile. In the middle of the day, you'd have to transfer to a SMART route that would take you the rest of the way. This does away with that, so it's one single bus route. It would be operated in partnership with SMART and DDOT and the RTA. So, as a passenger, as a customer, you don't know the difference. All you know is you get on the bus, it comes every 15 minutes, and it takes you to your destination. You have to worry about transferring. You have to worry about who's taking you there. It's all jointly branded. So, the idea is we really do away with some of the, with those transfer issues. We also increased the frequency. The 12-mile bus right now operates about 45 minutes, and I think frequency, which I think is kind of a generous, I think that's the very, very, very best, like two trips. It would be operated in partnership with SMART and DDOT and the RTA. So as a passenger, as a customer, you don't know the difference. All you know is you get on the bus, it comes every 15 minutes, and it takes you to your destination. You have to worry about transferring, you have to worry about who's taking you there. It's all jointly branded, so the idea is we really do away with some of the, with those transfer issues. We also increased the frequency. The 12-mile bus right now operates about 45 minutes, and I think frequency, which I think is kind of a generous, I think that's the very, very, very best, like two trips that it operates. These get up to 15-minute frequency during the peak periods, 20, 30 minutes in the off-peak. Greenfield, we have it 15 minutes all day because it's a very, very heavily-traveled line. We also have a capital program we built in along with this, along with these routes to be able to upgrade stops, provide real-time information, kind of, it's not Bus Rapid Transit level of investment, but another level, higher level of investment at stations and stops. I can go to the next one. Commuter Express. So we have five routes, and I apologize, they don't come up very well on this screen. One is on I-75, another's on M-59, and then two connecting Ann Arbor into Western Wayne County. These are commute-oriented routes, so they really operate just during the rush hour, pick up a bunch of people at a park-and-ride, take them to maybe one or two job destinations in the morning, do the reverse thing in the afternoon. We really wanted to experiment with a couple of these on M-59, which is a heavily-traveled corridor, but very difficult to serve with transit. We thought this was the best kind of initial solution we could put out there. I-75, we really want to be able to partner with MDOT on their project, and if they are going to be putting in a high occupancy vehicle lane, having some transit service there to use that lane would just be wonderful, in my opinion. I can go to the next. Oh, local service. So the local services are the kind of thin, black lines that are emanating on the edges of the network. These are brand-new bus services. These are services in places that do not have bus service today at all. Largely, these are in what we all probably know as the SMART opt-out communities, so these are communities that are within the SMART bus system but have chosen to not, not essentially pay the SMART millage to have service. We do want to connect those communities in because they're very large regional job centers. They don't necessarily have the level of investment as some of the other communities that are paying SMART and were asking to pay RTA. We want to connect them in because they are large regional job centers, so really kind of Livonia, Canton, Rochester, Waterford Township are a couple of those key communities. I can go to the next one. Airport Express. So this is probably the most popular thing we heard throughout all of our outreach, is it's unbelievable that I can't take transit from the airport, or I can't tell people who come into town to visit me, you know, how to get anywhere throughout the, you know, throughout the region from the airport on transit. So we developed a system of five Airport Express bus services that mirror slightly closely to what's operating out of Ann Arbor today. Right now, Ann Arbor's got a service called the Air Ride. They do a stop in downtown Ann Arbor, a stop just on I-94 and State Street, and take people back and forth the airport. It operates really, really well. It operates through a private contractor but managed by AAAA. So we would take a similar model, and we'd have five routes, one connecting, we'd take over that Ann Arbor route, we'd have a downtown Detroit route, another route that goes up, M-39, and comes over and goes up to Detroit Transit Center. We're still trying to figure out where the best stops are for the Oakland County route, makes its way through Southfield and up to Troy, basically. Another route that goes through midtown and up to McComb County on I-94, and then a fifth route that goes up I-275 and hits Novi. The Street Car. So we'll be taking over the management operations of the M1 Rail Street Car or Q line in 2027. Obviously, connects New Center to downtown Detroit, expected to be open in 2017. Just got their first car last week to test, so. Accessibility and Mobility. We have a program that we built in, a separate program that we built into the master plan that provides investment for people with disabilities and seniors, and also flexible investment for some of the communities that are on the outer edges of our kind of major fixed route system. One thing I want to talk about really briefly before I dive into a few details in this program is, we are very focused on ensuring that the rest of the investment that you've seen, the Bus Rapid Transit, the cross-county connectors, the local services, the airport services, are all accessible, are all accessible to people with disabilities and seniors, that the stop investments we're making are accessible, and that they're strategically located in areas where we can really best serve those populations. So we talk about this as an individual program, but I want to make sure this is not the only program, this is not the only place where those citizens kind of are most vulnerable, are on our minds. It's really throughout the whole plan. So there's really two big things we're doing here. One is improvements to what we call the, it's called the complimentary ADA service. So right now, SMART, DDOT, AAAA, all provide within 3/4 of a mile of their service area. They provide door-to-door on-demand service. If you're a person with a qualified disability, they'll come and pick you up and take you to your destination. Is that perfect? Obviously, I talked a little bit earlier about transfers that still have to happen if you're someone who wants to go from Berkeley to the DMC, for example, or vice versa. We want to improve that and take away, do away with those transfers. We also want to expand our network to kind of expand, to touch all the local services. We're now expanding out into some of the different communities. We'll be able to expand to allow some one-seat rides all the way to Ann Arbor and back. So we're really kind of just expanding the breadth of that network. We're also building out a program that we call Flexible Transit that will be managed through a mobility task force with people nominated from each, which each, from each member jurisdiction, that will really focus on on-demand transit investments in some of our lower-density communities, so some of the communities that are a little bit off of our, off of our map. So we're really doing some shifting around and trying to build that program up right now. This program starts at $10 million in our first year. It ramps up to be, right now, if our amendment passes on Thursday, it'll be about a $330 million program over the 20-year life of our plan. So it's a fairly large investment, and compare it, in comparing it to any other region, it's probably the largest investment in any kind of flexible transit that anybody's doing. So we're really excited about the possibilities of this program. This is my last piece, a piece that really brings it all together, something we've been talking about for quite some time, is a coordinated fare system. We're already working with DDOT and SMART on kind of the fare policy end of it. How much does a bus ride cost? That's one piece. The other piece is having one, you know, having one or actually kind of many ways that you can get on every system, but, so you don't have to have a pass for DDOT, a pass for SMART, change for AAAA, another set of change for the People Mover, you can have one card, one mobile app, any, any number of different ways for you to be able to access the system. So we're already actively working on this project with SMART, DDOT, and AAAA. Couple examples, just, just because I like to show people my friend in Portland, because he's so Portland, I know Steve and I both have the glasses and the beard, so maybe I shouldn't make fun of him. But they have a really cool mobile app where you can see when your bus is coming, click on your bus, pay your fare, and you get on the bus and just show the driver, and you're done. That's it. Lot of, lot of cities, especially small, medium cities, are actually moving to this model. The Clipper Card is out of San Francisco, that's kind of a more standard fare card it works on. They have 27 operators out there, where we have five, possibly six, depending on how we shake out. So it can be done, 27 different operators. Trust me, they do a lot of different things out there, including ferries, trains, street cars, every manner of thing. Chicago's got the Ventra Card. They actually have it where you can use your own bank card as your transit pass. So they're, I think, the only city in the United States that's doing that. So lots of different, interesting technologies that are out there. So that's it. I just wanted to leave you with a couple of closing thoughts. One, as I said, it's a 20-year plan. We're really aiming to have the majority of the plan, a lot of the smaller services that are partner services, done within the first five or six years, which is pretty fast in transit terms. We did do an independent economic analysis. We worked with MDOT on the plan using a Remy model, and we were able to find that the plan directly supports over 67,000 jobs. Most of those are in the construction field, so there is a very direct economic development benefit, not to mention, you know, property value increases if people are interested in encouraging and moving forward with transit-oriented development. So just wanted to put that out there. And then finally, just to kind of give you the numbers and sew it all up, $4.7 billion plan over 20 years translates to roughly about $3 million in millage revenue, about $150 million, $160 million, actually, that's incorrect, it's $160, annual local contribution. Capital program's about $1.3 million, the operating's about 3.3, I apologize, $1.3 billion. Operations is $3.3 billion, and this would increase our per-capita income from $69 to $157. So this puts us, we jump Cleveland and Atlanta. So with that, I can take any questions.
April Tim Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for, for coming out tonight and sharing these facts with us. I really appreciate that. You gave us a little bit of a history about the RTA, you talked about the, how it is all structured, and you walked through some of the, some of the details. I had, I think, three questions. I'll just kind of, the first was, if you can put it in terms of like an average annual payment, what would this cost an average homeowner annually? And secondly, if you could talk a little bit more about the increase in property values? I've heard some different numbers out there. If you're within a quarter-mile of a transit stop, you're probably like 40% premium benefit to your, to your property value, that type of thing, elaborate on that a little bit more. And then the third one is just for fun, the, just to affirm the fact that indeed, from here, we could go straight to the Tigers game, or we could go, you know, to the new ICE Arena that's being built without having to worry about driving or any of that stuff. And you've already hinted at the convenience of the airport, and in terms of the time and cost it would take to drive out there, park, leave your car for four or five days, and then turn around and come back, you know, how quickly it gets to the cost of the, of the annual payments anyway.
Sure. So for the average annual payment piece, the easiest way to break it down is if you have a house that has an assessed value of about $200,000, taxable value of $100,000, it'd be $120 a year.
$120, yeah.
Yeah. The average, I think we figured out that the average home, the actual average taxable value in the region was like $72,000, so that's, you know, but obviously varies quite wildly.
Sure.
Property values, I don't like to throw around a lot of numbers about this because they're so specific and contextual to the local real estate markets. I've seen so many different studies, and I never like to say, oh, it's, you know, it's this much.
Exactly this much, yeah.
It's exactly this much. I can say that there is viable evidence that every place a Bus Rapid Transit project has, has happened, property values have increased, and the economic development around those areas have increased. The one we use is kind of an example, it's slightly similar to Detroit, is Cleveland, and they saw about $5 billion with economic development investment along their BRT line. Now, I will say, that's not all because of the BRT. They were rebuilding a hospital at the time, they were doing some other things with economic development, but that, it's all part of the same soup. So you really have to work with the cities, work with the regional governments on the land use side, on the education side, on the medical side, and really kind of have a plan for everything going forward. And then, third, so I can affirm that, yes, you would be able to go directly to a Tigers game, or a Lions game, or a Red Wings game, or a show downtown. You can do that now with a Reflex service, if you wanted to try that, and you would be able to do that with the Bus Rapid Transit Service. In terms of the Airport Express Service, we haven't figured out all the numbers yet, but if you can imagine a ride that costs you somewhere in the neighborhood of $10, so maybe a $20 trip total, maybe an extra buck or two for parking, not very much, possibly even free parking versus, I don't know, a cab is, last time I took a Metro Car was like $75 one way.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Parking at the airport.
Parking at the airport. I think I parked for two days. Granted, it was close to the terminal, and it cost me $50, so.
Yep. Great, thank you. And thanks again for your work and for, again, providing the facts, as you mentioned, so that we can at least make an informed decision when November comes.
Yes.
Very good. Any other questions from the council?
Well, seeing, again, thank you for helping us understand more clearly the implications of this vote coming up in November.
Great.
It will be an important vote for all of us, as every vote is, to try and base our decisions on factual information. And as we've noted on the national level, factual information is not easy to come by.
Can I just, I just want, well, I probably shouldn't follow that, but RTAMichigan.org, we have, we have incredible level of detail on the plan, so if anyone's interested, we have, these are just different slides on, yeah. We have, all of our financial information is on there, everything in the plan is on there in a lot of detail, so, so if there's something you still need to know, please look.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ben, for being here and for sharing those thoughts with us. And now, we move on to item number three.
Motion Number M6516, matter of authorizing the city manager to enter into a cost-participation agreement with the Board of Commissioners of the County of Oakland and the City of Berkeley for the pilot local road improvement matching fund program.
Is that a motion to approve M6516?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Terbrack.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I will call your attention to your place setting, whether there's some additional information about this item in addition to what's been placed in your packet. But as of this year, the Oakland County Board of Commissioners are recognizing the tie between local road improvements and economic development. So what they did was they created a pilot project and allowed different municipalities to apply to this program with any road improvement programs that they have that's basically, essentially shovel-ready, or has an issue with funding in order to realize them. They wanted to hit about a 50% match. We took advantage of this program by applying for our Coolidge Project, which is in total $250,000. We were awarded the maximum amount possible, which is $15,431. Not quite a 50% match, I will admit, but certainly it was the full extent of the Oakland County Board of Commissioner's ability to award monies to Berkeley. So we are greatly appreciative of every dollar and cent that come from both the county and the state, and we're excited to enter into this agreement. I would specifically like to address and thank Mr. Schuler from our Department of Public Works, who applied for this program, made the case why this project would fit right in line with what the Board of Commissioners is looking for, and as well as Dave Woodward as well, who represents Berkeley well on our Board of Commissioners. So those two individuals deserve quite a bit of credit, and I'm asking for the ability to enter into a participation agreement to bring monies into Berkeley for this good project. I don't know if Derek has anything to add to that or not.
There's not much to add.
Okay.
We're getting $15,000.
Here, here.
And we're thankful.
Indeed.
Any question or discussion from anybody in the council? They're grateful, too.
Ms. Spouch, would you please call the roll on M6516?
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Ravlin?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Spouch, would you please read item number four?
Motion Number M6616, matter of authorizing the city manager to renew an agreement with Commercial Climate Controls Corporation to provide heating, ventilation, and air conditioning preventive maintenance services for City Hall, Library, Public Safety, Parks and Recations, Public Works, in an amount not to exceed $8,696.78 annually.
Is that a motion to approve M6616?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Tim Baker, support by Councilmember Terbrack. Mr. Baumgarten.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a renewal of our existing agreement with one change from years past. It does now include the library. The library is changed over and actually jumped on this contract with the rest of our city facilities. So that is really the only change you're seeing from previous years.
Very good. Any questions, discussion on this item? Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the contract where the people come out and do our furnace checks, air conditioner checks, change the belts, change the filters, and do all that stuff on a routine basis every, all during the year.
Yes, sir.
And also respond to any systems down that we have, and things like that.
Right. So if it's 82 degrees in anybody's office, they're the ones that come out and help that poor person out.
Anybody we know?
Yeah, I won't name any names, but I'm glad I got a coat on.
Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Spouch, would you please call the roll on M6616?
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Ravlin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Spouch, would you please read item number five?
Motion Number M6716, matter of authorizing the city manager to renew an agreement with McCoy Maintenance to provide janitorial services at City Hall, Library, Public Safety, Parks and Recations, Public Works, in an amount not to exceed $51,600.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, and members of council, this, too, is a renewal of an existing contract with two small changes. Since the library has additional hours now, we're adding an additional time for cleaning that building, as well as some additional time for the community center's floor in the, at the community center. It's taking a little bit longer, and we want to make sure that floor is looking top-notch for each of our fantastic events. We're joined by Mr. McCoy, who's in the office here today, or in the council chambers here today. I don't know if he wants to step to the mic and add anything, but we've been, and I'm not saying this because he's in the room, but we've been supremely happy with the service we've received thus far, and would advocate a renewal of this contract.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McCoy, for being here. Are there any questions about this contract and its renewal? Everybody seems happy and pleased about the contract.
These prices have not been increased since 2013, so they continue to work with us.
Yes.
Only before you get a chance to change it.
That's right. He wants to vote before you get a chance to change your mind. Very good. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-6716?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Ravlin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
Thank you.
Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six?
Motion number M-6816, matter of approving appointments to various boards and commissions.
Is it a motion to approve M-6816?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Ravlin with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten.
Mr. Mayor, we continue to receive and review applications for the various board vacancies that we have. So what you have is three boards in front of you this evening. Mr. Jeffrey Tong, I think Jeff's in, Jeffrey's in the office. Yep, he's here. As a candidate for Board of Review for the Building Code, Building Code Board of Appeals, you have Chris Cleveland and James Yates. And for the Tree Board, you have Lisa Fittrich. This, the term for the Board of Review expires in July of 2020. The Building Code Board of Appeals, these apply, expire in July of 2019, and the Tree Board term expire in July of 2018. And again, we continue to receive applications, so if anybody is interested in applying for our boards, we will have, in fact, more applications and appointments for you next month as well. So this is a continual process.
Very good. Is there any discussion about any member on these boards? Very good.
I thought there was someone in the hall.
No, nobody wanted to weigh in. Very good. Then, we will, the motion is M-6816. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Ravlin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number seven?
Motion number M-6916, matter of approving the 2016-2017 winter maintenance agreement between the Road Commission for Oakland County and the City of Berkeley.
Is it a motion to approve M-6916?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Ravlin. Mr. Baumgarten.
Mr. Mayor, I'm actually going to ask Derek Schuler from our Department of Public Works to walk up and tell you a little bit about this item.
Good evening. This is not a new one. This is our annual visit from RCOC for the winter maintenance of 12 Mile Road. So 12 Mile is county jurisdiction. We provide winter maintenance activities, which is snow plowing, salting on 12 Mile, because we frankly provide a higher level of service to our businesses and residents. So we take on that role, and the county reimburses us for those expenses. Not 100% of them, but they do reimburse us. And you can see from my memo, we are receiving approximately $10,218 for this winter season, which is a 2% increase over the previous year. So we're always happy to see those increases. There were periods of time where we did not see those increases. So we're pleased to report those increases, which are based allegedly on bid prices that they see in their work. So I'm happy to answer any questions on this.
Very good. Any questions from Mr. Schuler?
Same as always.
Same as always.
Yes.
Very good. Then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-6916?
Ravlin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number eight?
Motion number M-7016, matter of awarding the 2016 to 2017 pavement maintenance program contract to SJR Pavement Repair Incorporated of Warren, Michigan, at the unit prices provided not to exceed $100,000. In addition, authorize $3,000 to Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, HRC, for construction engineering services.
Is it a motion to approve M-7016?
Move to approve.
Support.
Move to approve by Councilmember Terbrack with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten.
Mr. Mayor, you'll notice that Derek did not return to his seat after the last item, so he's prepared to give you an update on this item as well.
Thank you, Matt. This is our annual pavement preventative maintenance program, which of late, we've been designating to spray patch, which is a relatively new product that we hire a contractor to apply to local streets, major streets, alleys. And we've found it over the last three to four years that has held up very well. It's a pavement repair technique. It's put in place in place of cold patch. We still do some cold patch work, but the spray patch product does stick in the hole, if you will, longer than the cold patch. And we've been very happy with the results the last three years, when we've put down, God, I want to say 700 some odd tons, I believe, was in my memo, so an oppressive amount of spray patch material. So once again, we'd like to enter into an agreement. We went out to bid on this. We received two bids via Mitten. One of the bidders was our previous contractor. This is a new contractor. So we've got a new player, but the prices did come in lower than the prices we've seen in previous years. So I'm happy to report that. They've done work in some of our neighboring communities as well. So we'd like to move forward with awarding this contract to SJR to do our spray patch work. I do intend to do a wave this fall, as well as come back after the winter season and sort of finish her off to spend that $100,000 that we have designated. So I'm happy to answer any questions on this item.
Mayor Pro Tim Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. And thank you for continuing to coordinate this type of efforts to keep the roads and things as good a shape as we possibly can, given the overall condition and all that kind of stuff. Given that it's a new provider this time, I'm pleased to hear that you'll be starting the work with them this fall, should it be approved here tonight. What kinds of thoughts do you have around ensuring that, you know, the caliber and quality of their work is up to par, given, you know, we're switching to a different provider? I appreciate the reference check that you mentioned, that they've served neighboring communities in the past. What kinds of mechanisms do we have in place to ensure that work?
Sure. And we have the same questions, because we've had very good success with the previous company. But it was time to rebid, as we should do, and check unit prices, and they did come in lower this time. So as far as assurance goes, I personally am out onsite with them quite a bit, as I was with the previous vendor. And we've also got HRC involved, and they'll be watching this as well, keeping an eye on, you know, when they're putting it down, the preparatory sort of things that they're doing, because preparation is key in this sort of thing. So you don't just go out, spray it in a hole. There's cleaning of the hole that takes place. There's the rolling that takes place after its place. There's some brooming that's done. So there's a whole process that takes shape. And we'll be essentially inspecting that and monitoring it, quite honestly, over that first winter to see how it performs. And if we're not happy with the performance, then we'll make our case known, certainly.
Thank you. And just from a timing perspective, from any given resident that may see this crew passing their way on the street, could you kind of describe the timeframe? Are we talking minutes, or hours, or days for each treatment?
You're talking minutes. It obviously depends on the size of the hole, but they clean it out usually with compressed air to get a nice solid surface. They apply the material, they roll it, they broom it. You know, there is an hour or two there that, you know, it's a little stickier than normal, but by and large, it's a very clean operation. And then typically, there's some sweeping done after the fact as well. So it happens very quickly, to the point where I, you know, many of us probably don't even know that they were there until we come back and we see that those holes have been repaired. It blends in great with concrete or asphalt, so it's visually, you know, aesthetically as well, even though it is a patch. We've had good success with that as well. And it just, it just manages to really stick there quite a bit better than the cold patch material does. So we've been very happy with it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to say also that the previous contractor did an excellent job. The patches that were put in are holding up really well, and it was a great transition to us from go from cold patch to this spray patch. Will the new contractor be using basically the same types of asphalt?
That's correct. It's the exact same specifications as the previous bid. So, and mark my words, we will be keeping an eye on this, and we will be seeing how this product performs over the winter months. And if we have any reservations, we will take appropriate action.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion or questions on this item? Thank you, Derek, for bringing this to us. Again, it's an important thing to keep our roads, at least, before we can handle the larger issues, to keep those potholes filled. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-7016?
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Ravlin?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number nine?
Motion number M-7116, matter of authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Allied Building Service, 1801 Howard Street, Detroit, Michigan, 48216, to install interior and exterior LED lighting throughout the library for a cost not to exceed $42,000, to be paid from Capital Outlay, 815-940-976-738.
Is it a motion to approve M-7116?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Ravlin. Mr. Baumgarten.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the library director is back up at the podium again. We went through a process where we went out to bid for this, like we do for many of our large capital projects. We were going with one of our very qualified bidders that decided to try to work with the city. And Matt Church is available to give you a little more information on that.
Great. Thank you very much. So we went out to bid on July 27. We held a mandatory pre-bid meeting, gave everyone a chance to come in and see the facility. We had 14 companies onsite, and then we received five bids through Mitten for the project. Allied Building Service was the low bidder for the base project with a bid amount of $35,251. They did recommend an alternate approach that I ran by Derek in DPW. They recommended that we stick with the base. We had asked for a base approach to the project, but then entertained alternates as well. So we did receive a mix of base and alternates. We will be going after DTE energy incentives on this project. We've already met with representatives from DTE, spent about 90 minutes counting light bulbs throughout the facility, and then also did a follow-up meeting with Allied Building Service. We did identify some additional needs beyond the RFP. We're looking to replace 14 emergency lights in Ballas, seven exit signs, and one penthouse light. So really, the goal of this project is to get the entire facility inside and out onto LED lights. And the payback here is very good. We're looking at about a three-year payback. We are estimating that about $2,000 in rebates will come from DTE Energy, as long as we complete the project by the end of November, which Allied has assured me that is very likely, so long as we're approved tonight. So the total project cost is $42,000, and that's being funded by the DDA.
Very good. Thank you, Matt. Any questions? Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. Matt, would you clarify the warranty on all these new lights that the company is providing?
Five years. So that includes the light itself and all of the labor. They provided references. I checked their references. One gentleman said about two years after their project was done, they had a bulb burnout, and they came out, replaced it, and no charge to them. So they stand behind both the product and the labor.
I think that's very good, a five-year warranty on it. So, thank you, Matt.
Yes, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Mayor Pro Tim Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. Matt, thank you for pursuing this. I think the savings for the benefit, for the, for the community will be outstanding, as well as the quality of the lighting that these bulbs provide. From a patron perspective, could you talk a little bit about the process of installation and the degree to which it will either will or will not affect our standard hours?
Yes. They have assured me that they'll be very aware of people around them. They'll come in either before or after the library is open for the higher traffic areas, you know, right over the public computers, walkways, things like that. But much of the work will be done kind of in zones that they'll designate in advance. So really, they are open to working with us to make sure we don't interrupt service to the public.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Very good. Seems like a very wise and useful program. It's kind of analogous to what we have on the streets, city streets, too, with DTE's incentive.
Yes, exactly.
Taking advantage of that incentive is a good thing.
That's right.
Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-7116?
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Ravlin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 10 on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-7216, matter of representing the Berkeley Public Library annual report for fiscal year 2015-2016.
Is it a motion to approve M-7216?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman with support by Councilmember Terbrack. Mr. Baumgarten.
Mr. Mayor, would you believe it? Even after all the great things we've heard about from the library tonight, there is still plenty more to be said. So Mr. Church is here to give his annual report.
Good. Thank you very much. And lights are important, but this is really the exciting stuff here. So the annual report's a nice time to step back, look at how we've done, where we've grown, where we've declined, and kind of lessons learned. So just a few points here to share. We finally had a circulation increase, and we're very excited about that. We circulated 803 more items at the library. And so I think that we'll continue to see that as we have new hours and new staff. So that metric is one that we watch very closely month to month, and we're happy to see an increase. You can see that we've added a gate count, so we've now had a people counter at the front door. This is our second year, 114,164 people. So that's approximately 9,500 visitors per month. And that's just a huge, exciting number of people coming through the door, being served. A slight decrease in public computer sessions. Our new software tracks them a little bit differently, but we're seeing still great demand for our computers. Sometimes they'll line up, waiting for use of the computers, and also lots of Wi-Fi usage within the building, so people bringing their own devices. You can see that we had a big increase on Facebook. So last year, we had 791 likes. We now have 1,139 likes on the library's Facebook page. So we are doing a few paid sponsored posts to get that in front of more viewers. And we've also rolled out an Instagram account recently. One of our new staff members took that on and is very excited to reach people through that website. A slight decrease in the media coverage, 98 articles last year, 71 this year. That is probably reflective of decline and shift in print media. But I think through Facebook and Instagram, we're still getting the word out, the city newsletter. We're still reaching people and sharing information. We did change how we track programs and attendance. So on the surface, it looks like a decline. But I think overall, we can expect strong program attendance with our new programs, new staff, new hours. I can tell you, they have lots of great ideas. 658 people registered for library cards this year, 53 more library cards than we registered last year. So that's really good news. And then finally, in donations, the friends at the library continue to be invaluable in their support of the library, a lot of our programs and special events we couldn't do without them. We're really grateful as well for the continued support of Vibe Credit Union, year after year, one of the key sponsors in our summer reading program. And finally, great year for donations. People make donations to support and purchase new materials. We raised 782 more dollars than last year. So keep the library in mind for birthdays, special occasions, things like that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Are there any questions, discussion on the library report?
All right. Thank you.
We've done a fabulous job at the library, and I think all our residents are aware of that. That's what I hear, and I'm sure that's what the audience here understands as well. Our library is terrific, and these numbers bear that out.
Thank you. It's an honor.
So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-7216?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Ravlin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number, M-73, or item number 11?
Motion number M-7316, matter of authorizing the city manager to engage Gabriel Roder, Smith, and Company to provide actual services and related calculations for the Berkeley Public Safety Retirement Fund in connection with Gatsby Statement 67. The amount for this service, $10,000, will be paid from account 101-201-817000.
Is it a motion to approve M-7316?
Motion to approve.
Support. By Councilmember Blanchard with support from Mayor Pro Tim Baker. Mr. Baumgarten.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, in advance of the annual fiscal audits, which will be in October, we're going through and having many of our numbers updated in order to be in compliance with organization with an organization called Gatsby, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They make the rules that we live by when we go through our audits. This item in particular is number sixty-seven, which is what we go by as we update our actuarial numbers and related calculations concerning our pension board. So, we're asking that this work be done so that we are in line with all of the accounting standards that we need to apply to.
So, this basically is make sure we're in compliance?
Indeed.
Any questions, discussion? Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know there's a whole number of Gatsby things. We did one of these with Gabriel Roder Smith about a year ago, a year and a half ago. What was the difference between that one and this one?
That's a great question. I don't have that information in front of me right now. I would imagine that this was an annual item. I see a hand up Darshel is able to jump in and save me on this one. I can always save before my time, so.
Yeah.
You're exercising your phone-a-friend here.
Indeed, yes.
This particular service is for the Berkeley Public Safety Pension Board. It is an annual process. The rules under pensions changed, what, four or five years ago?
That's true.
They're now being implemented and this is going to be an annual piece. We did this last year. This is a continuing, just continuing the process.
So, it's an, it wasn't an annual thing before?
It was not before, but as of two or three years ago, it has become an annual thing.
That's why I was going to say, we used to do it every three or four years and now we've got to do it annually. Okay, well, they impose the rules, Oz, we got to follow them.
It's apparently the way it works.
I didn't realize it was annual. No, sorry.
There are, as you say, there are several Gatsby, so.
Right.
With all kinds of numbers and different implications. Gatsby forty-five is the one that costs a lot of money. That's the one I remember all the time.
And we've got sixty-seven and sixty-eight and.
So, thank you, Darshel, for that. Are there any other questions for Darshel? Very good. Then, in order to be in compliance, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M seventy-three sixteen?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting and Councilmember Gravlin is up first.
I will keep this brief. Ms. Grass, I covered a lot that I was going to talk about as far as the tree board meeting that met last Monday on the twelfth. There were one hundred and eleven new tree orders, which happened to be exactly the same as last year, which is ironic. As she said, they are always seeking new members and be happy to order a tree or donate so others may have a tree as well and welcome Lisa Fritsch to the board. And if you're interested, there are more board positions, so put your name in. The Planning Commission meets next Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, at seven thirty. We will go over the open house that was held in August, which many of you attended and had a chance to speak with. So, we look forward to going over a lot of the comments for the master plan amendment and what the next steps are. So, I hope to see a lot of you again next Tuesday at seven thirty for the Planning Commission meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Terbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few items this evening. First off, we have another tail on the trail coming up at the Tot Lot on Monday, September twenty-sixth, so next Monday at six PM. It is almost the end of September and the ice arena is open. It's open. People are skating. There's ice. It's ready for open skating and open hockey. Call the Parks and Recreation four times. There are a few times still available. In a couple of days, the Robina, well, in a couple of days, I have something coming up in the Robina Plaza that will actually be happening tomorrow, but I want to let everybody know we're programming that space very quickly. There's a couple of items coming up. The picnic lunch, so it's a bring-your-own-lunch kind of picnic to get comfortable in the space, see how it feels. That's going to be September twenty-first from noon to two. And, summer in September will be September twenty-fourth from noon to three. We're thinking hot dogs, some summer games, maybe a bounce house. A lot of the similarities to the Summer Fest events that we had. So, we have a little summer in September. Again, that's coming up, the Robina Plaza. I'm sure somebody else is going to make a little more mention specifically of that, but it's coming. And I also want to take a minute to thank Scott Genix and the rest of the Parks and Recreation staff for an absolutely incredibly busy summer camp this year at Parks and Rec. They were absolutely slammed. Kids had a great time and the staff was tremendous and Scott does a whole lot of the planning and organizing and setting up for the summer camp. So, I do want to thank him for the tremendous job. Another fantastic summer for the kids in Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Baker?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick things as well. Last week was the Michigan Municipal League's annual conference. Michigan Municipal League is a nonprofit organization that represents cities and villages like ours and the city of Berkeley was well represented at that session. One thing that I'd like to offer was there's a website called savemycity.org. Save-M-I for Michigan, save-mycity.org. It provides information about state shared revenue that comes from the state level to the municipalities. A couple of quick facts which continue to amaze me in the way in which municipalities like ours are being treated. Across the country, since two thousand two to two thousand fifteen was the data, two thousand two to fifteen, on average, fifty percent growth in the amount of revenue that is passed from the states to the municipalities so that they can invest in the kinds of programming that we talked about tonight and protecting and repairing the infrastructure upon which we all depend. Fifty percent growth. Let's see, forty-nine out of the fifty states in this great union of ours benefited from that, from that increase in investment. Guess which one state out of the whole country not only did not receive fifty percent, we were actually, we, I gave it away, sorry. I'm not, I'm not good at surprises. Michigan was the only state in the nation to not only not invest more in the municipalities but take a step back. So, think about whatever salary or income you had back in two thousand two and take eight percent less than that here today. Now, that's what we're receiving, eight percent less than what we had back in two thousand two. Seven point five billion with a beat, seven point five billion dollars has been redirected from the municipalities to help the state make ends meet, to repair and plug their own budget holes rather than allowing us to do what we had been structurally enabled to do because these funds were supposed to be passed through to the cities. They're keeping it. Five million dollars alone here in the city of Berkeley has been diverted, about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year that we're having to make do with other means or just not provide those services. So, what can you do? So, first, check out the savemycity.org, save-M-I-city.org and talk with our state rep and talk with our state senator about their position on the funding of municipalities and what kind of remedies they might be able to see, to see us be able to do. So, that was first thing. Secondly, a quote from Brian Solis. Brian Solis once said, "Community is much more than belonging to something. It's about doing something together that makes belonging matter." Again, that was, "Community is much more than belonging to something. It's about doing something together that makes belonging matter." I offered that up for two thoughts and the first of which I'll defer to the city manager to talk more about the Robina Plaza project. As liaison to the DDA, this has been on the forefront of their agenda for the last several cycles and I'll just offer that we're very thankful to the community, using that definition, of input and feedback from residents and businesses, both in that immediate vicinity and in the surrounding areas. And we look forward to seeing what this experiment has in store for us. The only way that this thing will really be a failure is if we fail to learn and so I'm excited for these kinds of opportunities to see what that plaza could do for us as a catalytic feature of our downtown. And instead, I'll shift just real quickly to another way in which September is important for us. It is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and if you see gold ribbons around the city, that's to help raise awareness about cancers that strike the most vulnerable of our communities and that's the infants and young children. Here in the city of Berkeley, many of you may know about circumstances or folks that face these types of issues. Lea LaCoix, who was diagnosed with a rare form of leukemia when she was ten months old, continues to struggle and suffer with that. She's basically set up a full-time residence at Beaumont with her family and they've received a tremendous support and care, both from the facility and from their family and neighbors and things. My intent tonight is just again to raise awareness about the fact that this kind of disease, these types of things, strike all of us and whatever you can do to make yourself a little bit more aware about the kinds of things that happen with childhood cancer and the kinds of ways that we can help support these families. They have their GoFundMe page, LaCoix Strong, and the caringbridge.org is like a journal where they post what's going on with Lea. But, please, reach out to folks. They need support, whether it's this family or others that you may know. Because life's tough enough as it is without getting dealt a hand like that. So, with that, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Steve.
First of all, I'd like to thank Matt Church for his wonderful presentation. The library is a gem in our community and be sure and keep looking online for all of the various programs that come up. He seems to have been been able to get some really unique types of programs throughout the last couple of years. Also, the beautification committee, I see we've gotten a couple of new members lately, but we still need more. We, I mean, we can always use more because there's a lot of work that the beautification committee wants to get involved in to make our city more beautiful than it is already. At the convention, there was a lot of very good workshops, but I think one of the most important things is you should keep track of what's happening legislatively in Michigan. Everybody should. And at one of the legislative meetings, they prioritized what they're doing up there. And I'm just going to give you the topics. If there's anything that interests you or that you're concerned about, you should go online and look and see exactly what they are doing. First of all, there's a hundred and ten seats up. Forty of them this year are term limited. So, every vote counts, you know, so make sure you get out there and vote. Their high priority programs or things that they're working on are the TIF, the DDA, the money that is captured, the funds that is captured by the DDA. And they're concerned about special millage funds and whether they can continue to be captured. Dark stores. Michigan Chamber is against the bill that they have, but all of the local chambers seem to be for it. And the dark stores are the stores that close and they can't, they can't rent them or sell them to anybody because of the deed restrictions on them. And that's a very, they can't, in other words, like the Kmart over here in Greenfield that closed. We don't have any of those in our city, fortunately, but it's going to remain empty until somebody can buy it and put in something that is not sold in that store. Now, the one at Fifteen Mile in Liverny, they put in movie theaters. So, that's how they got through it, but it was empty for a long, long time. The next thing they're working on is infrastructure, protecting public health and safety, working with the DEQ, personal property tax changes and reimbursements, FOIA, local government, right now cannot bring suit against nuisance FOIA requests and I guess they are out there. Active issues are medical marijuana and this is not to do with any legislation or it's to do with growers, processors, and transporters, in other words, the big companies. And, the fee to license can be up to five thousand dollars annually for commercialization. Brownfields, energy, clean energy, clean water, tax exemptions for nonprofits, they're talking about that. Road warranties, the roads that are down, what kind of warranties can they require? Speed limits, they're talking about that again. Autonomous vehicles, what are we going to do with vehicles that can drive themselves? Local cost sharing and M dot road projects. If you have a population over twenty-five thousand, you do not, you don't have to share. Government vetoed it. I'm not sure what that is all about. It's just kind of, everybody's discussing it. There's a bill five-five-seven and whatever it was, the governor vetoed it. And then, these were the issues that are lurking out there. Telecom line relocation, historic districts, billboards. We had that issue come before us several years ago and we almost got a giant billboard in downtown Berkeley and fortunately, we were able to thwart that. Fireworks, there's a lot of bills out there for fireworks. The gag order, the gag order that they lifted where it said that councils could not even give information on issues that were coming up, like if we wanted to pass a road bond or anything, any issue, we could not even explain it to you. But, that's sort of silent right now, so that's good. And of course, the state budget and revenue sharing is always an issue. And then I had the savemycity.com. Make sure you remember that and go onto it and take a look.
Org.
Dot org, I'm sorry. Yeah, right, I wrote com. I don't know why I did it. Okay. And that's all I have tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. The big thing that I have is that this Saturday is the Public Safety Fire Open House. At, the times have been changed because we have a conflict with the Stephen Stiller Tower Run, so it will now be held from one o'clock until five o'clock. And it will involve all kinds of activities for the kids. It will involve training. We normally have a smokehouse. We take the kids in there. We smoke it up. We tell them how to get out. We do a lot of, a lot of good training like that. So, and there's also things for adults to learn, too. So, if you get a chance, come on down. There'll be, I think there's going to be a chili cook-off where you get to sample some chili and vote to see who, which one of the public safety officers gets the bragging rights for the next year. So, that's something to look forward to. Again, that is this coming Saturday from one to five. Now, if I may jump on Councilmember Baker's thing, I've got a quote. Don't usually get to give quotes, but this one I like because I, we've been actively soliciting volunteers, okay? "Volunteering is the ultimate exercise in democracy. You vote in elections once a year, but when you volunteer, you vote every day about the kind of community you want to live in." So, if you're interested in volunteering, the city can use you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have just two quick items. As referenced earlier, we continue to work to address these building issues all throughout the community. I want to give a quick update. A while back, a gentleman got up here and he was talking about some of the water issues he'd been having concerning a site that was next to him. We were able to get some remedy there and we continue to put our build the sites under further scrutiny. As you are aware, it's, we have not found that perfect solution yet, but we feel like we're taking steps in the right direction and certainly more to come on that issue. We're not turning a deaf ear. Now, to the fun thing, Robina Plaza, we kick off the closure for that area tomorrow. We're very excited about it. As referenced, we've got some fun Parks and Rec events already going in. This is a project that is probably ten years in the making, going all the way back to the conversations that led up to the two thousand seven master plan. Very excited about it. The DDA is specifically very excited about it. Our Downtown Development Authority is going to be the funding vehicle to make this improvement to Robina Plaza. So, this isn't necessarily a general fund item. This is something that is paid for through a mechanism that where our local businesses contribute. Very excited about that. I would like to help, hopefully, everybody can join us Wednesday for the kickoff, but if not, certainly Saturday. It'd be a great time to come in and see this plaza. It's going to be a work in progress. It's going to change depending on what the event is and cannot give the DDA enough credit for their support throughout this. So, very exciting things coming to downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Really, a number of times over the last couple of years, I've talked to the council about medical marijuana and have explained to you some of the legislative efforts that were going on in Lansing to modify or clarify the law that's been in place, I think, since two thousand eight, only to see those legislative efforts stall or die. Well, as Ms. Stedman talked about very briefly, we finally have seen some activity which could result in some major changes for the medical marijuana law in this state. Both the Senate and the State House have recently passed bills that really started gaining traction last fall. Those bills are now on the governor's desk waiting for signature. No guarantee that's going to happen, but the pundits who purport to know such things are forecasting that the governor will sign these, so we'll see. But, if that that the governor will sign these, so we'll see. But if that does happen, there's going to be some fairly significant changes in how that's regulated. Up until now, with the case law, the idea of having these provisioning centers and dispensaries was very much in doubt. As the council knows, I've taken the position based on the case law that they are not allowed under Michigan law, and many communities in Michigan have taken a similar approach. Meanwhile, there have been some other communities that have chosen to turn a blind eye to it and have allowed them. I think there's upwards of fifty provisioning centers in Lansing alone, and also in some areas of Wayne and Washtenaw County, you'll find them. Well, if these bills do move forward and are signed into law by the governor, we're going to find that medical marijuana is going to start being regulated, and the distribution of it will start being regulated, much like the way we regulate liquor in this state. There's going to be a state licensing scheme. There's going to be tax, taxation up to three percent. There are going, it's going to be an annual permit. It's going to, the state licensing would defer at least initially to the locals like us to, through our zoning ordinances, determine whether and where we want to allow these types of uses. Again, much like the way, much like the way liquor is currently regulated at the local level, we get the first shot at determining where these places should be or whether a license should be issued at all. In the event that we do allow these dispensaries and provisioning centers, it would allow us at the local level to charge up to five thousand dollars per facility, and in addition, we would get a piece of the action. I haven't gotten into all the detail yet, but I would say a piece of the action of the tax that the state is going to be levying at the state level, they will be kicking back, that's a poor choice of words, they will be returning to the locals some portion of that, to the extent we allow these types of uses, again, to help fund the administration and enforcement. Some of the other changes that the proposed legislation will do is it will clarify the law that edible marijuana products for medical purposes are allowed. Up till now, that's been in a gray area in the law, whether it was only the smoking type medical marijuana, the tobacco type product that was allowed, or could you also have the extracts or the oils, which many people find, you know, to be very good for medical purposes, particularly when there's young people involved who are benefiting from these products for medicinal purposes. And then, there's also a tracking system that's proposed. I think the jury's out on how well and how smoothly that is going to work, but there is, as a result of this legislation, going to be a, I think it's a five-member board created at the state level, and they're going to oversee this whole operation, and they're going to have some type of a system that is supposed to track the marijuana from, as they say, seed to sale. I think the idea of that is, you know, to keep tabs of it, to keep it from, you know, getting out of control, to try to monitor and keep the criminal element out of it. But basically, what's happening is the state is opening up the law now and basically taking the court decisions, which have been fairly conservative and restrictive in interpreting the current law, and they are now opening it up in a sense, undoing those laws, or excuse me, those court decisions, but at the same time, not taking it completely out of the locals' hands, and they are going to allow us, if these go through, to, you know, through our local zoning, determine what type of community we want to be as far as these types of medical marijuana facilities go. Do we want them at all, to the extent we want them? Where do we want to see them located? So, this stuff is probably going to happen. I mean, we could be within days of the governor signing this into law, so it's probably going to be another thing for Mr. Barnett to add to the Planning Commission's agenda here soon, because I think we're going to probably have to look at some appropriate zoning regulations fitting for Berkeley as to how we want to deal with the medical marijuana businesses, which will surely come a knocking on our doors. Not on all our doors collectively, but...
But as a community.
In the city, as a community.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We will have this to discuss, I'm sure, in the months ahead.
Yes.
Because I suspect the governor will sign it. Just a couple of things. Last Friday, we had the Chamber of Commerce golf outing, and it was a wonderful success. One of the things that we need to remind everybody about is the role of the Chamber of Commerce in the city in terms of the contribution they make to so many things through donations. Now, two big areas that benefited from the golf outing was the Tri-Community Coalition, and the other is the Holiday Lights Parade. Two of those are big, major areas that are supported by the chamber, but they have also great support for virtually everything that is useful and good in the city, and we're enormously thankful for them and all they do. On September tenth, we had a new venture in town, the County Oakland Irish Fest, and that was a great success. About seven thousand people, I'm told by people who can assess those kinds of numbers, showed up in the city to embrace some Irish music and song and so on. So, it was a wonderful event. I'd like to thank former Mayor Protem Dale Goodcourage and Steve Zanetti and their committee, who put a lot of time making this possible. And despite the few showers, lots of folks showed up and enjoyed themselves, and our businesses benefited greatly from the foot traffic that resulted from this, and actually, businesses that will continue to benefit because some new visitors to town began to see some of the fine restaurants and stores that we have in town. So, there are my two major items. No surprise at all to hear the Mayor Protem give us the numbers from Lansing about how much they have basically hammered the municipalities, seven point five billion dollars taken away from municipalities around the state, and they still can't manage their budget, still can't balance it without more cuts. But that's their problem. It's a higher pay grade than ours. We have to make do with what they hand down to us. Now, it's time for us to go to closed session, and before we just propose that motion in a minute, just to remind the audience that when we come out from closed session, we will adjourn. There'll be no further business beyond that, so that you know that for your own planning. Ms. Bautch, would you please read item number twelve?
Closed session, consider whether to meet in closed session for the purpose of consulting with its attorney regarding trial and settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation, namely Malad and Mamad versus Berkeley Oakland County Circuit Court Number two zero one five dash one four eight zero eight six dash N I.
Is it a motion to go into closed session?
Move to go into closed session?
Support by Councilmember Turbrack with support by Mayor Protem Baker. Ms. Bautch, would you please call the roll?
Gravlin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.